Okay, we'll call the November seventeenth meeting of the Conservation Commission to Order about seven oh six. Roll call seating of alternates, we could, we have one alternate, we could seat Nora for.
Julia.
I guess. I don't know if we need to go through, we need to do a motion on that. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, all right, Bob move. Carol second and all in favor of seating Nora for Julia, signify by saying aye. Aye, thank you. Okay, approval of minutes of October. Twentieth, with the correction at this point that see Jordan was not in attendance.
I move that we accept the minutes from October twenty. With the correction that Carol Jordan was not present.
I'll second.
Thank you. Omissions, corrections, changes. Misstatements. Improper punctuation.
Don't forget half truths.
Half truths and outright lies. Okay, hearing, hearing none, all in favor of accepting the minutes as stated in the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Abstentions.
On, abstain.
CJ. Stains, okay, thank you. Okay, President to speak, we have no presenters and finance treasures report expenditures. I don't know if anything's been spent, Carol would know since the last meeting.
Yeah, the only thing that as I, as I mentioned to you Pete, we have not yet, they to my knowledge paid Connecticut Land Conservation Council in this, in this fiscal year. So I don't think maybe they were thanking us for last year's contribution. I did go online and find and downloaded forms for both CACWIC and CLCC. However, the CLCC does not have a form up for the current fiscal year. So I need to follow up on that, I'm assuming that we want to pay both of those. But I also need to check with Mike Demato to coordinate on the CACWIC payment.
Okay, I, I think it's reasonable to, to, to do that and re-up on those organizations. Yeah, just back to that, that mention of a thank you note, the, the thank you note what was, was dated December twenty ninth, twenty twenty.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, but then, then a personal note from Amy there said, please let me know how CLCC may be of assistance to you in twenty twenty one. So almost like it was covering us for twenty twenty one, but.
That's fine.
In any case, that's, that's what that was about.
Okay, so am I authorized to go ahead and, and pay those, assuming that, that I can work things out with Mike and, and or Mr. Schreiber as Chair of the Inland Wetlands Commission? To coordinate the payment on that dual membership.
Yeah. Um, I, I would say that's probably good, what was it, with a hundred dollars we, we, we spent on CLCC and I don't know what the CACWIC is usually running.
Uh, CACWIC is sixty dollars for each commission if it's a, a double commission, double.
No. Yeah.
Sixty five or, or you get a deduct, a, a dis- discount if it's two commissions from the same town.
Can I make a motion that we appropriate a hundred and sixty dollars to pay for CLCC and CACWIC?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion? Um, I think it's, as, as I mentioned, I think, I think we should just go ahead and do that. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye, raise a hand. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstain. Okay, so Carol, you can go ahead and make those arrangements whenever, that'd be great, thank you.
Um, I, the only thing is if, just do the memberships without the dollar amount, just in case for some reason in the, in the wetlands, wetlands doesn't want to renew, that would be, that would be an extra five bucks. So I think just say we want to pay the memberships without a dollar amount, but we would do a hundred for Connecticut Land Conservation Council, which is, has a variable rate structure.
Okay.
Okay, just so we understand each other.
All right, Carol, I want you to redo the motion then, please.
Okay, so we, that, that we contribute, we, we renew our memberships with CACIWC and, and. And CLCC and that the CLCC be at a hundred dollars.
Okay, just renew their memberships, but not anything for any specific amount for CACWIC.
Yeah, because just in case in, in the wetlands decides not to. I don't know what their budget looks like.
All right, I'll say, I'll second that.
Okay, great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Abstain. Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, usually Nora, there's a newsletter that comes with, with CACWIC that we get, I don't know whether it's quarterly or monthly, monthly maybe. I haven't seen those for the past year, so they may not have been putting them out, uh, haven't been delivering them to us at the town or membership hadn't been upheld or they withheld, you know, printing those, I'm not sure.
Does Nora know what CACWIC stands for?
Yeah.
It's the Connecticut Association of Conservation and Inland Wetlands Commissions. And, you know, as Pete says, they, in the past, if they've had regular newsletters and, and also workshops and. And then can I, CLCC is a Connecticut Land Conservation Council, and they were actually very helpful in getting out some information about the grant process throughout the summer and fall.
Okay, so just for clarification, I can vote today, I can.
Yes, oh, absolutely, yes.
I wasn't sure of that.
Yes.
Make sure. I agree with everything you're saying.
Kathy. I just wondered if we could find out if CACWIC has the option of sending out the newsletter in digital form? Because that would be so much more helpful for everybody on the commission now that we're not meeting in person.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you know, the tons I've checked the mailbox, there's been nothing there and, you know, hard copy.
Is there someone that would consider contacting them and just finding out what they're doing about their newsletter?
Maybe when we sign up for them, that can be, you know, whether that's in the, in the, in the, in the. Form to fill out, whether it indicates that there's a, a printed newsletter or there's an option for having it delivered paper free, I don't know.
Getting information from these organizations is a little bit difficult and, and they, since they both have offices in the same building in Milltown, we had problems. But they sent, they sent the dues for both organizations to, to CLCC a couple of years ago, to straighten that out.
Yeah.
And I think we got that squared away now.
Oh, I see. Pat Phillips is connecting, I wonder how long I've ignored her. Sorry, Pat. Little she signs in here. Hello, Pat, do you read me, do you read me, over?
Hi, hi. I, oh, you can't see me, huh? Sorry, sorry, I'm late.
That's okay, I'm sorry, how long were you waiting out there in the cold?
Nope, not long, nope, Robert must have seen my message, sorry. Uh, okay, here, I, oh, boom.
Okay.
Sorry, I, I had to drop my car.
Seven fifteen.
Hey, I'll make a motion to see Pat for, for Ju- Jackie.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, now you can vote, Pat, Patty.
Okay.
Okay, anything else expenditures, there'll be a request for some coming up, but we'll leave that to that. Old Business, Talmitch Property, deep grant application, all right, the, the grant application went in.
Yay.
I mean, incredible, incredible effort and piece of production on that. Now that Kathy put together this hundred and twenty nine page document. Um.
Thank Carol.
Carol, Carol shepherded the purchase and sales agreement through the Board of Selectmen, through both attorneys, the family and back and forth on that, that, that took some doing. So, uh, a fair amount of time, there's, there was negotiation going on back and forth and, and in that process. So to, to Kathy and Carol, thanks, we haven't got the grant yet, but. What, what got, you know, what we needed doing got done. Another monumental production here.
And, and, and thanks also to Jackie for doing the map.
Oh, yes, 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 well, right, there were, I don't know, I don't remember how many maps there were in there, the various aspects there, but, but quite a few, at least a dozen anyway. So it was an amazing and impressive looking document, so.
And I'd like to compliment Kathy for going back, but they, when the state finally came out, it might was Kathy like third week of October, they finally came out with the ratings standards. Kathy went back to the document and tweaked a few things to see if she could get us a few more points. So, you know, she's, she's unbelievable. Her knowledge, and particularly the area of the natural resources, the sections of the document and, and all of the supporting materials that she assembled were astounding.
Yeah, well, certainly thanks to both of you. Okay, and I will wait and see, you know, for that document, they ought to fund us at least seventy five, eighty percent, I would think.
Yeah, well. Let's forget something.
I hear it's coming out in hardback.
Yeah, Amazon will have it next week. Okay, um, so I guess that's, that's where we are at this point and. We'll, we'll wait until process works its way through. Anything else Kathy, you want to add on that at this point?
No, just sit and wait now.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Properties Management, Fenton Ruby, Dravney Sanctuary. Maintenance. I think there's still a, still a, a stem across the Y goal, maybe, yes, Patty, you've been out there on the trails, how the trails look on these days.
Uh, I was here yesterday, I didn't do them all, but everything looked good what I did do.
Okay.
Yeah, no more snakes at Taylor Pond, I was excited about that.
Snakes in Taylor Pond?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they, they're by that bridge and I avoided all of them. So I've been, not, not since there anything to worry about, I know, it's an irrational fear.
But they, when they had the bushes?
No, it's right, they're coiled up right after you cross the bridge on the left, pretty predictably, they look like a root, but.
Really?
Yeah.
Cool, well, they're not hang, they're not hanging from the trees then, right?
No, no, they do sometimes. I've been out there with them hanging on the shore.
And I guess, I guess we still have the, the viewing platform is still high and dry, I haven't been out to take a look at it yet to see if I come up with any. Any way that maybe we could move it or not. We, I'll have to take a look at that and, and see.
You know, one thought about that, Peter, is now with winter coming up, what happened if we went out there and we jacked up the front of it, you know, the part towards the pond? So once it froze, once it froze, we could maybe, you know, be easier to get it back to where it was. So it doesn't get frozen to the ground.
Yep, yep, probably should, yeah, get it up off the ground.
Yeah.
I have some sections of. Four inch diameter, short sections of four inch diameter lolly columns. They're very heavy, but, you know, depending on the ground.
Well, we don't know how that.
Those might.
We don't know how the bottom is made either, you know.
All right, yeah. Now we'd need some lines, some pieces, you know, longitudinal pieces down two sides to, to roll it, but, but yeah, that's another thing you need to scope out. Might be interesting to try to put it on those rollers and roll it down to the shore.
Yeah.
Anyway, so that's all I get, while the invasive plants, you know, we, we discussed those last time, Bob did a little, little research on that and. I don't know if you, you looked into that anymore, Bob and all, or?
No, it's, no, it's pretty much is what it is, I mean, if. I could probably get the professor from Yukon to come out and take a look, but, I mean, he's gonna take a look and I think probably give us the same information we have. But I, I can follow that up.
Yeah, it sounded like maybe that, that what we might do and maybe suggested last time is just get in there and, and try to cut them down, maybe a couple of times during the season. Uh, if it's a small enough area and, you know, manageable and you can get in there with, with boots on or. Or something maybe and just sheer them off, you know, a number of times and see if that'll, that'll slow them down at, at least.
And Bob, if you happen to be going by the, the intersection of Caesar Road and Lucian, want to take a look and see if what's there at the corner of that is Fragmities? Because I, there's something that suddenly appeared at that intersection and, I mean, it's not our responsibility, but it, it would be nice to know if, if they're, you know, if there's. It's showing up in other places in town.
Yeah, I've seen that, I, I'm pretty sure they are, that is Fragmities there at that intersection, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that's a new, that's something new that cropped up quite recently, as far as I know.
Oh, they drift in that far, I guess the seeds blowing the wind from somewhere and, and ended up in that little swampy area there.
Did they do any, any work in that area, ditching or any covert worker? Because that's what I'm finding is a lot of it pops up whenever they disturb the soils.
Oh, okay, yeah, I don't know, I, I'm not sure, I just noticed the other day.
And, yeah, I don't know if other towns are trying to do something more collectively. I know, I, I know there are some towns that actually do some spraying and such on the roadsides. For invasives, but, you know, as a conservation commission, is it something that we want to look into? And see if it's something that can be start to be addressed if it's on public property by Public Works?
Yeah, it might be, and it's, this might be quite a, close enough to the road, it may, may officially be within the towns, right, really, I'm not sure.
Well, most likely some of it would be and some of it would not be, depends on, you know, distance from the center line. I suspect it's someone, someone private property there too, in which case then who owns the property, you know, they're gonna want something, someone doing on it and.
I'll, I'll do some.
Not sure Public Works is gonna get into, into that kind of thing either, they're shorthanded anyway and.
Just thought it was something that we might want to be aware of because it is, it can really take over if it, if on, on addressed.
I suppose if we were really gung ho, we'd get in our cars and drive up and down the roads and see what the, what the prevalence is or occurrence is around the town and now. But someday when we all have nothing to do.
Wow, that's gonna come to be.
Well, the thing is, is sometimes if you have small patches of it, if you can, you know, either work with landowners and maybe we can talk about doing an invasive workshop. Um, at the library sometime, just to kind of educate pe- people. Uh, you know, again, it, it's just a shame that a lot of these small patches, if you kind of treat them, uh, then you don't have it, you know, expanding to the point where it's out of control.
Yeah. Yeah, as Bob said, I think mentioned, you know, the treatment is kind of labor intensive and if you're gonna be painting stuff on the stems out there, you gotta have, you know, licensed. You know, somebody licensed to apply that kind of stuff in wetlands, which is what it is. So, I mean, we, we could. Consider that, put that on the, on the back burner somewhere maybe and, uh, give it some thought, but. Anyone want to go anywhere with this right now at this point? Anyone prepared to take some? Active, get actively engaged in that?
Not right now.
No.
Well, someone shows me what it looks like, I'm willing to put on the boots and start clipping, but I have no idea, and I tried looking for it when I was walking the trail. So if anybody's out there, uh, let me know, I, I'm pretty responsive.
Well, if they, if they're mature plants, they can be ten, twelve, you know, fourteen feet high with big fronds at the top of them this time of year, big fluffy fronds, I think, you know.
They're about the same height as a, as a stalk of corn, of corn that you see growing and, you know, for, they're quite large.
I saw something like that, but I thought earlier I had heard there was only maybe twenty of them and whatever I saw was certainly more than twenty, so I'm not sure what they are. So, I mean, Robert showed, showed, explained to me the, the hill there, wh- where they are, where that stream goes into Feed Taylor Pond, but I, but I, I'm. Somebody wants to show me.
All right, well, if I go buy some and remember and I'll take a picture of it and email you on, of, of.
Perfect.
From wherever I, wherever I come across some, if I'm going by some, I'll have to remember, so.
I could take a picture of the ones at the corner of Caesar and Lucian and send it to you.
Yeah, I'm not sure how good examples they are, but that, that could be, yeah, Kathy?
Well, a couple of things that just, anybody, Patty, we can go online and you can just look up Fragmities, invasive Fragmities, and you know, in terms of seeing a picture. But in terms of cutting it, I don't think that it's going to do any good until it's actually growing next season, so.
Yeah, it's too late.
Yeah, too late now, yeah, so we might want to do in the spring is, you know, we can get, if people are interested, we can meet out there and, and we can show everybody where it is. And then we can come up with a game plan and maybe we can take turns, uh, you know, getting some, some boots on and, and cutting it as it's growing through the season.
Yeah, just because that's certainly easy enough for me to do once I know how to do it and what it is.
There's some, if you just put in Fragmities, I just did it, there's, there's some really good pictures of it, you, you, once you see the picture, you, you will easily be able to identify it.
Great, okay.
Okay, great, thanks, Marilyn. All right, and I got a, um, request from Alan Humphrey, the new Parks and Rec person there about. Putting signs up in Fenton Ruby for a scavenger hunt. Um, I think they were supposed to be doing that, are, are there some out there, Patty, that, yeah?
Mm-hmm, the, the turkey, the turkey hunt, yep, we saw, we saw one of them out, I saw one of them out there the other, when I, I saw Patty actually at the park last week. I have a, I have a friend by, somebody by aqua therapy class turned out to be my neighbor around the corner on Lucian Road and she had, had lived here for thirty eight years, never been out to the park. So I took her on a, a backroads tour of our facility, so.
Okay, so that, that's going on again, I guess. And I said, yes, of course, yeah, fine, no problem there, just. Soon that the signs get picked up after it's all over with. All right, Knowlton Preserve, Talmitch Track. Maintenance. I've been in contact with, with Troy Spazardo at Public Works about getting the, the lot plowed. And I don't know if we had any regular plowing schedule at any, in earlier years, but. Um, no, I gave them all the reasons, you know, we, we need to keep public access for the, for the preserves there and, and. The deep, uh. Deep, uh, would like to have. Properties that they provide funding for to be accessible year round, so, so, and he said, well, here's a couple of things we can do, he said. He said, the big trucks won't go in there, you know, when they're plowing the road, there's not enough rope, so he said, one option, I think he talked to Erica about it. Is to take out that dividing piece of property and the trees and little section of a wall there between. Mason Road and the parking area, and he said, then the big trucks, when they go through, can just do that at the same time. Said, the alternate, al- alternatively, we'd have to come back with a small truck, but that wouldn't be. And I, I told him upfront, I said, this is not something that's a priority, obviously, there are other facilities in town that need plowing, you know, immediate after the storm. So it doesn't matter whether it takes a few days to get that. No, he said, well, yeah, a small truck could go back there, but it, it may not be for, for several days, uh, you know, aft- after the snow. So I told him we'd talk it over and see. What we wanted to do, you know, I can't remember how much is in between that, the road and, and the parking area, I know there's one big, there's one big tree at the entrance there that has the. The, the game cam on it. And a little bit of a wall and a few trees. So it, and I don't remember the stat, the, the condition or status or shape of the big tree at the corner, whether it's a good tree worth saving, but, you know. And I said, well, you know, we'll talk about it, but, but realistically, I said, you know, it's, you know, the parking lot is there to be functional, it's not necessarily simple, not necessarily supposed to be, you know, an attractive feature. So I said, but we'll, we'll talk about it, so, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think it's really a concern only if the snow is fairly deep, you know, a minor snowfall doesn't, you know, isn't, not a big deal unless it, unless it build accumulates and becomes icy and just. But yeah, it's, it's a, I can, I can appreciate their concerns because they are short-staffed and, and, and I think that they have a contractor plowing Mason Road. And the contractors are not gonna want to, you know, take, be able to get in there with the big piles, so.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's what I was told last year that the contractor was doing it, whether that's the case this year or not, you know, I, I have no idea, we. He didn't or I didn't ask that, he didn't clarify that, but.
Pete, I'd be happy to go out there with you, take a look at what, you know, what might be able to be done and. Without, without create, creating too much disturbance to the, to the, the stone walls and the natural features too, so.
Yeah, I, I can't, I can't remember what the condition or the shape or size of, uh. Well, of, of any wall segment that, that's in, in, in there, as you said, I'd have to take a look at it, but.
I'll be happy to go out there with you and take a look at it if you want.
I don't see why, I don't see it's a big deal if it takes two. I don't see why, I don't see it's a big deal if it takes two or three days for them to get out there and plow it back.
I, I agree, I, I think it's, I think we should be. We reasonable on this and it also dovetails with, you know, an upcoming C, park. Park and Preserve Maintenance Responsibilities and Costs for the Future. I think if we do the, the, just the truck going in there when they can. I think that might help us with. When there's a meeting that has to do with C on the agenda. The, to prove that we're willing to work with them and we don't necessarily need top drawer, we just want to be. We just want it to be plowed and, and, and just try to keep a level-headed approach on this so that. We get more. Response for them on the bigger pieces of maintenance with, what they want, kind of like, don't sweat the small stuff. Be, be happy to get a little truck in there a couple of days after the storm.
Well, yeah, that's far as we're concerned, but I, you know. I think they would probably rather just have a big truck go blasting through when they do the road.
Oh, okay.
I, I think that would be easier for them than, than sending someone else with a truck all the way out, out there to do that on a separate. On a, making a separate trip, but.
Do we know anybody with a pickup that has, that has a plow that? That might as a volunteer be willing to go out there and, and do it as a public service?
People get plows on their trucks to make money.
Oh, yeah. There is that.
Yeah, what was I gonna say, I was gonna say something. Alright, well, why don't, why don't we, alright, well, you know, I. I don't mind waiting if that's the issue, but it is, is a matter of time and them taking somebody to have to come out there, not just a matter of wait for us, it's a matter of another trip. It might be nicer to leave the, leave the wall there and the, and the division there. Okay, that's what I was thinking also, yeah, a, a big truck coming blasting through and I'm wondering. Whether they might end up damaging the, the parking area, the surface of that. With whatever setting they have on a plow for the road and then going, going through the parking lot, they might be able to finesse it a little bit with the. With a small truck and a small plow.
Well, the roads gravel anyway, Pete, I'm not sure, like, you know, they, the way they set it up for the gravel road is probably similar to that. You talking about the surface that's in there that they kind of created?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's kind of a packed down surface, they put the, you know, the road, the road, scrapings, tailings. You know, stuff they have braided up. Roads somewhere, you know, that are down there and it's, it's fairly hard packed, like, almost like they paved it. An asphalt surface in there, would, would hate to, hate to lose that, I mean. When it was first put down, it was just stayed gravelly and loose for, for some while, a year or two and, until it packed, but when it was loose. There were yahoos were going in there and, and cutting donuts every now and then in the soft stuff, so. They can't do that right now. Why don't we, why don't we, I don't know, float the, let them know that we'll just have them do it with a small truck and we'll wait or any other?
I would. Small truck.
Okay, we got an add, anyone else object or? Alright, I'll get back to him on, on that.
Let's try it out for this year. You know, and see how it goes. Because otherwise they're gonna have to go in there fairly soon to have to cut that other. Part out to make it open.
Yeah, that's a good idea, yeah, just see how it works this year and of course it all is gonna depend on how much snow we get to. You know, and how often they have to go running out there. Versus, well, you know, if we had a big truck, we could have just done that, bing, when we're running down the road, but, yeah, alright, we'll, we'll go for that. Kathy, do you have something else?
Well, I know we're gonna talk about doing something at the Talmadge Bridge too, perhaps this weekend, I mean, we'll be down in that areas. You know, people are gonna be down there, we can look at it then too.
Yeah, good, yeah, of course, yeah, yeah. Give it some thought. On the ground. Alright, bridge replacement, we have. We've had, we've acquired a section of. Extension ladder, aluminum extension ladder from, from, from the Schreiber's. Chris and Kathy procured it and it's been slid down the hill to. To the site, are close, close to it at, at this point. So we're looking for. To get a few people together to maybe put the thing in place and affix some treads to it and. See if we can get a new bridge across the, across the creek there. Be nice if we could get it done, you know, in the next few days or possibly this week, this weekend. Saturday sounds like the nicest day weatherwise at this point, it's maybe supposed to be, you know, if you can. Trust the Doppler Dons, the, you know, there may be some rain Sunday afternoon, but we'd probably be working in the morning mostly anyway. So, I don't know. How many of us are, are, how many of you are, are working steps that only have the weekend and would wanna? Do it on the weekend or not, but.
Let me know, I'll do Saturday, not, not sure how much help I'll be, but.
Great, well, there's other things to do also, if, you know, in between, I mean, the, the trail actually needs blazing on the way down with some fresh paint and. Lumber two that needs cutting, so there's stuff to do. So, how many would be available on the weekend, I can, I can do that, I think. Kathy?
Not Saturday, I can do Sunday.
You know, for me, yes, same as Bob.
Or when Nora, I'm sorry?
I could do early Saturday or Sunday.
Or Sunday also. Well, we wanna do, do Sunday then?
Patty, did you say that you could do it Sunday too?
I, I did, yep, either, that would work too.
Okay. Well, why don't we, we can get the most people in, I think, so maybe that would work for everybody, sound good? What's a good time? Ten o'clock, nine thirty?
About nine thirty.
Sounds good, yeah.
Alright, let's go with nine thirty then, yeah.
Do you have boards out there for the treads?
Most of the boards are, we're gonna scavenge, sprout, repurpose off the old bridge.
Okay, reuse the deck, okay.
Yeah, the deck boards, they're, they're sixty feet down the river. I looked at them, Chris and Kathy and I looked at them out there. Most of them look usable, I will, I will bring a couple other board, additional ones that I, I can cut from stuff I have in the yard here. We will maybe need some six by six piers, which I have a few of and we'll. We'll maybe need to get a couple more of those. But the game plan is to put a couple of two by fours, attach them to the rails, the side of the ladder. Screw them on the side of the ladder and then the tread boards could be put crosswise to, to the rails down the side.
Well, I've seen, I've seen Vernon, they take and they run them the length of the ladder and they screw them into the. The crossbars of the ladder. They run, they run two boards across the, down the length of the center of the ladder, screw them into the rungs.
Just, just two boards?
Two boards.
What, what size boards, Bob, two by fours?
They, they, they were, they were using. Deck boards, pressure-treated direct deck boards.
Yeah, but how many of them? That's what, that's what you'd be walking on, right? Well, two, two deck boards aren't very wide.
They go up in the White Mountains, how wide are some of those boardwalks?
Not, not two.
And between the two boards, there's probably two inch space. So if we use those deck boards, those deck boards are what, six inch?
Yeah, well, seven and a half, eight inch, they were, started out as, as two by eights, so they're seven and a half.
Just have to check to see if you can get two between, those two side by side will fill that ladder right up in the center.
Well, that's about the same thing as running them crosswise on a couple of rails though. Down the side.
Why don't you guys sort this out and figure out a plan?
No, because we wanna request funding right at the meeting this evening as to what we need to purchase.
It's, it's less work if you run the boards, the length of the ladder in the center.
But is it as structurally sound, because?
You, you got the two I beams, you got one I beam on both sides of the ladder.
Yeah, that won't, that won't.
That's just, that's just what I've seen, I, I'm, you know, I, I don't really care, one way or the other.
I think we want it wider than that though. The, the deck boards that are out there, I think three feet probably. We've, we've shrunk them since then by, by four, five. Or, or maybe even six inches on subsequent bridges, but. So I think, I think we might as well utilize that, those materials that are out there, so, you know, we don't wanna. I don't think we wanna string together for eighteen feet end to end a whole bunch of deck boards. So. So I, I think, I think maybe we'll go with this rail approach on the crossboards and we'll consider, you know, that approach the next time we. We wanna do something.
No skin off mine.
Pardon?
No skin off mine.
One, one other thing, this is, we're meeting on Mason Road, correct?
Yes, we could meet at the. The shortest way to get to where we're going is straight down the hill, but that requires parking along Mason Road. There used to be a couple, you could pull out two or three cars right about at that point. Where straight down the hill will take you to the bridge. It's, it's a longer walk if you started the trailhead and go walking around, but it'll get you, yeah, so. Yeah, why don't we, why don't we meet at the parking lot anyway, I guess, then, and check out the park and maybe as a couple of us go by and, and then. We could run people back to that point, you know, carpool if necessary or, or isn't enough parking there? Alright, so we need to purchase some, some two by fours. And maybe a six by six or two. And. Chris Demers and Kathy too, maybe, maybe she's sitting this one out, we'll run down to Willard's and Willamette on Friday. And pick up some supplies. So, if we can get some authorization.
How much, how much would it expect it to be, two or three, not more than a couple hundred?
Well, no, it'll be a lot less than a couple hundred.
You to purchase materials necessary to repair the bridge on the Talmadge Spur Trail.
Alright, so with no upper limit at this point, you think?
Yeah, we've got a lot of money left because we haven't spent, we had spent forty-five dollars and ninety-two cents and added a hundred and sixty to that, so we're. We've got, we've got, we've got plenty of money left in the budget.
Okay, thank you, Kathy, good enough on that motion? Okay, can you throw something close to it back at us, please?
Carol Jordan moved to authorize purchase of materials to repair the Talmadge Bridge. Talmadge Spur Trail Bridge, something like that, yeah.
Talmadge Trail Bridge, yeah, okay. Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstained? Okay, we shall do that and we'll meet at nine thirty at the parking lot and. We can all survey the, the parking situation then at that point also. Nine thirty Sunday, right? Okay, now. Kathy and I were talking about new Talmadge signs.
Pardon me, Pete, I was just gonna say, I don't think that we need to really discuss that today until we actually. Take ownership of the.
And, and what we need is gonna be determined by whether or not we get, receive a grant. If we receive a grant, there'd be very specific requirements on signage, so I don't think there's any point in discussing that now.
So there would, there would, there would be a matter of acknowledging. Deep, but also at the time then, we, I think we talked about. Acknowledging the rest of the, the Talmadge family, right, on the signs was.
Yeah, there might be some signage, but I, I don't think there's any point in talking about, even talking about it now. Because, because those, how, what the content of the signs will be determined by, to be the request, the deep requirements. If we get a grant and they, and if we don't get a grant, then, you know, would be somewhat different, so I think we should table that until. We know what's going on in terms of, of grant funding.
Okay, was that, would that affect what, what we were talking about, you mentioned Kathy about a sign in the parking lot? Additional sign or should we wait to and?
No, that was more for the Knowlton, so, yeah, when we were working on the grant. Deep is really kind of pushing people that receive funding. Even old funding, to be sure they have adequate access and that there's signage that acknowledges. The money that was provided by the open space grants. And so when Carol and I were working on the grant, as you know, on the Knowlton property, the two signs are over more by the Nipmuck Trail. There's no signage by the parking lot right now on the Knowlton side that acknowledges the funding. So, one of the things we talked about was, you know, considering putting one more sign on the Knowlton side. Or on the parking lot side that acknowledges. The deep funding, just so there would be something at that trailhead as well.
So we could just get an additional one, additional sign of the ones we already have, would do it then, right?
Yeah, I think we, I think we can, I think all of that can wait, because according to the terms of the grant, we've got two years from the time we. The, the, we would receive an award, right Kathy, to, to get the signage in place. And so we, I think we should be doing it in conjunction with other signage that's required by the grant.
Okay, you might as well, if we're gonna put in order for signs to get them, you know, all done at the same. Now, we, we had those signs done by. Right there in town, who was it, what's the name?
Signs of all kinds?
Signs of all kinds, yeah.
Are they still in business?
Yeah, in Manchester.
Well, the only, the only thing is, I was thinking, there wouldn't be any reason not to do a sign for the Knowlton side this year. If we have funding maybe in the spring, put up another, it's just while we still have a crew of people that. That are willing to do some work, might be a good time to do it, so. And the sign itself is gonna have to look like the old Knowlton sign and have an old deep logo on it. So, the new sign for Talmadge, if we get that property, we'll have to have the new logo, which might get a little confusing if we try to do them all at once. So it's just a thought, so.
And I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be surprised if they still have a template that's, that, that Signs of All Kinds. Because as my recollection, when we had the new signs made up. They used the old template, but that's just a recollection.
Yeah, I, I, cuz I did some research on that to see, on the, for the compliance, they, one of the new sections on the grant application this year. Was, had to do with compliance issues and I went back to see when we bought the signs, it wasn't within the, the stated time period and all that kind of stuff. And it, it appeared we did get some, an extra sign, the ones from. And it, it appeared we did get some, an extra sign, the ones from Marsh Road, and they appear to have done the, used the same template because they cost less. So, yeah, I think you're right, Marilyn. They might have similar. But I think, I don't think that's something we need to address immediately.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Well, I'm just thinking ahead.
Yeah, okay, well, we can talk, Kathy.
Yeah, we can see if this, you know, as you said, money left in the spring that we haven't come up with something else while we can.
I think, yeah.
I wonder if we've got the paperwork somewhere in, in the files on, uh. On that side of the mall.
Somewhere, I've got a piece of paper with notes on about when we paid the bills and I looked at, looked up the bills. I have all. Financial records there are there.
Okay.
Marilyn, um, I know that you dealt with, uh, Signs of All Kinds at that point. I think you had taken that on as, as a project. Um, would, if you have some time, would you be able to check with them to see if they still have the template?
Yeah.
And maybe just.
I, I would be surprised that they did it because it certainly makes their life easier. They get to charge the same amount for the, a sign, working it from scratch as opposed to. Just going into their files and tweaking it.
Right.
So that, um, the name of them again is Signs of All Kinds?
Yeah, I, Marilyn, I'll look that up for you. I'll, when I, I'll, next time, I'll make a point of going up to the town office building and get you the information.
Right.
And I can get you the dates of the invoices and make it easier for them to find.
And it'll just be a heads up on, from them, letting, letting them know that it, it's something will be coming, and we're just kind of. Researching it right now to see if they still have the templates on hand.
And get a, get a ballpark on the price.
Ballpark. How many signs?
It would be just one at this point, just.
Just one.
Same, same as the Norton, you know.
Same as the Norton parcel, okay.
Not, not the.
Well, it would be, it would be exactly like the Noltons.
Right.
The signs that we've had made, yeah, because it would just be one more sign, three on the Norton property.
Gotcha. So it's, uh, simply them bringing it up and running it. Okay, thank you.
Right.
Thanks, Marilyn.
And, uh.
Well, too.
So that would probably, on the sign probably says Royal Milton, right? I'll go look at the sign before I call him.
Marilyn, I'll, I'll send you a picture of it. I have a picture.
Kathy's got, Kathy, that was the, another thing that, Kathy, that we didn't mention was the photography, Kathy. We have signs, signs of, talk about signs of all kinds. Because they, the, the compliance section, they required pictures of parking lots, pictures of roadside parking, pictures of signage and. Um, it, uh, does it? You know, it was, they added something like five new sections to this year's application compared to the applications we had. Filled out in our earlier, for our earlier purchase, everything from cli- uh, climate change to compliance to, um. Justice and equity and, and it was, it was, uh, quite a process to work through this application and I. Kathy deserves a lot of credit for making, staying on top of everything, making sure we did it right.
The, the signs are, uh, fairly good quality. It's the Talmage sign out there that, uh, Kathy wanted a picture of had. Had a good crop of lichens growing right on the, on the, on the sign surface across the words, um, and so I took, um. My standard cleaning solution of trisodium phosphate and bleach and, uh. Scrubbed that off and the sign appeared not to have, uh, suffered any, at least the last I looked, the lettering was still there, you know, maybe it'll come off next week, but. Uh, anyway, it, it cleaned up pretty well, you know, with, uh, with that growth growing on it and then taking that, uh, harsh solution to it, so.
Yeah, if you spray the sign, if you spray the sign every year with copper solution, copper sulfate, it keeps the lichens from growing also.
Yeah. Um, okay, so moving on, um.
Peter, um, one quick thing beforehand, um, there's, we need some, uh, paper maps for the, um. Talmage and Milton too. I don't know if that's something anybody has. Um, Carol, do you have any copies?
Uh, I'm not sure. I don't know if I have any, but I could make some, but I, but, uh, we're, we, we may well want to be wanting to revise those and it would be nice to. Since, since we have the, um. We now have the maps that Jackie did that show the trails for that, maybe would be nice to, to do something different with that, with. Uh, some trail description, but also use the, um, the, the, uh, colored maps. If we can.
They're dark in the brochures.
Yeah.
The, the yellow brochures with the maps.
Yeah.
Before we crank out anything new, I guess, uh, you know, we'd make new, new ones that have the additional property and trails on it. We can run, we can run off some more of the.
Oh, I could do, yeah, I could run off some more of those at some point, but this is the, this is the one Pete's talking about is this guy.
Yeah, right.
Right. Well, I just wondered if anybody had some already made that we could put in the trail boxes.
I don't know, I, I can check.
I only have a few, in, in any case, we, we, we should have more. There should be yellow paper in the file cabinet.
There's plenty of paper. Remember, we, we restocked a paper one year. We were trying to use up our money. We still got fair amount of paper.
And the other thing, Peter, regarding, um, that area, the, we had, uh, we have on the agenda trail crossing signs. So the other thing that came up when we were doing the grant application is just safety for people crossing from the parking lot. If they're going, you know, uh, to be on the road, walking down to the trailhead and so on. Um, we did talk about putting up some trail crossing signs and that would be something we could, you know, purchase and put up on both sides of the. The road from the parking lot, just so people would be aware that there might be people on the road.
I think we, Kathy, I think we should do that also where the Nipmuck crosses. Uh, and as well as, as where, for the, in the, the parking lot area, and I think we could, there are probably pedestrian crossing signs. That we could get from, uh, you know, standard highway, you know, supply store, we, the, rather than doing it custom signs, all we need is a pedestrian crossing sign.
Right.
That would be standard. So we can look into that, um, sure, we've got catalogs that we might even have in our files, catalogs of, um, of signage. Road signage that we could look.
Yeah.
Is that, yeah. Is that something you want to do, Carol, or?
I'll take, I'll see what we can find out, if we can find. I'm sure the town probably has something. But I, I can't, I won't promise to do it tomorrow, but I will, I'll see what I can do from, I, I, but I think standard signage would probably be less expensive and. All we need is, is something that's, that's a pedestrian crossing warning.
Right.
By both locations.
It needs to be something a little, you know, bigger and brighter than just, uh, you know, a homemade, uh, routed out sign kind of thing too, so, so that would be good, whether either white or yellow, but. But not, not too huge and gaudy, but something that people could.
Right, but I, I'm sure there, I'm sure that they're readily available, we would each park, both, probably both directions, so we might need four signs if we do both. Where the Nipmuck crosses and where the parking lot is.
Yeah, if you could look into that.
I'll do some research.
That would be great, thank you. Okay, then, anything else while Norton Preserve. Park and Preserve Maintenance Responsibilities and Costs, um. Uh, what we talked about, uh, have been talking about this, this for some time, and maybe it's time to sit down with, uh. Say the selectmen and see, um. What alternatives there might be, uh, besides, um, just, uh, the commission out there doing all the work. Um, I think if we sit down and, and maybe, uh, go to a, a B O S meeting and, and present the case here, we should. Maybe have some ideas, suggestions, uh, alternatives, some options, um. That, that we might suggest or propose and not just say, we ain't doing it anymore, here, you guys find out, find someone to do it. Um. So I'm not sure how we want to, uh, proceed on this, whether we want to take time and, and brainstorm that tonight, or, um.
Maybe that's a topic of conversation Sunday.
Technically not supposed to have meetings outside of, if they're not posted.
Oops, excuse me.
Yeah.
I think it's, uh, it's a kind of an, of, of involved issue, um, and probably Department of Public Works would need to be involved too. I know there was a lot of pressure on them and they are shorthanded and so it's a difficult question, but one of the things also is we will, I think we need to somehow find ways. To get frequent users of the park to be more involved and, um, you know, maybe say, hey, guys, if you want to keep using the park. That we need help maintaining it and, um, and see if we can build a larger. Uh, build some kind of a better, more extensive list of people who are willing to help with, with, uh, in park workdays and, uh. You know, just, you know, things like, um, as they walk the trails, just, you know, throwing aside branches that are across the bed. And there are a lot of little things that people can do, well, if they are regular hikers in the park and on the dirt, on the other trails, um. That we could encourage. I don't know how you go about doing it, but, um, it's something.
That's the thing, I don't know, it's, that's a good idea and easy to say, like, you know, like getting the Boy Scouts to help build the bridge, but it takes you, uh. Takes you more time to organize that than it does to get out and do it yourself is, is, is the thing, um. And towns that have someone that's, you know, full-time or, you know, Parks and Rec Director can organize those kind of things and take the time and. Not saying we can't or, or shouldn't, but I'm saying that, uh, you know, it, it takes a significant amount of organizational effort, I think, to. To, to, to get something like that started and fire up the people involved. It takes more than just putting a sign out in the park and. And then, then, all right.
At least start with putting out a sign in the park that says, we need your help.
We did.
You want to continue to have, to enjoy this park, we need help. And it's not, not, you know, not on a regular basis, but on an occasional basis. If you enjoy the park, if you enjoy working in the outdoors and men even, you know, see if we can. Because we need to have some folks who have some experience and, and the, the skills to do. The con- replacement and construction of bridges and, and water bars and things of that kind. And there are workshops that are available through Connecticut Forest and Park Association too.
And all it takes is somebody to organize that and.
I know that, but I'm just saying.
But, I'm not saying, but if someone wants to take that on, you know, uh, yeah, that sounds great, but, you know, if. Maybe the suggestion is gonna be, or, or, or to, an idea to throw out to was, is that, uh. Um, the town needs to, uh, up the, uh, responsibilities for Parks and Recs Director to. To include more duties and overseeing, um, the trail systems. I don't know.
Yeah, um, Nora and Patty, you guys use the park quite often. You have some thoughts about this?
Did, did you get much response from the signs that were up a few months ago?
Yeah, we got, we got you and Nora.
There was, there was one other person that, that did contact us about.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, right, there was one, uh, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, some places have specific committees or commissions just to run a park, you know, like Friends of the Park.
Yeah.
But it's a separate, it's a separate group that actually meets, yep.
Yep.
Because the Conservation Commission has done this for quite a number of years and it's just gotten to a point where it's, um, it's. Yeah, physically and just time-wise, it's just too much for, uh, this group to continue to do, particularly for Fenton Ruby with the heavy use there and. You know, we have a lot of bridges and, and, um, a lot of trails.
Yeah.
Kathy, Kathy, didn't, didn't you mention to me that it's not in, um. The purview of the original paperwork? I'm, I'm probably not using the, the right language here. Didn't you indicate that, um, that it was never the. The, the thought was never that the actual commission would be in charge of maintenance? Or did I understand that wrong?
I, I just mean the Conservation Commission, if you look at what we're statutorially responsible to do, it's, it has nothing to do with. You know, maintaining the parks. I believe that the management of the park didn't necessarily mean that we had to do the physical work.
Right.
Yeah.
It does mention that we, we manage the park, so.
Yeah, we were given, we were given management authority for the park, for Fenton Ruby, Norton and Talmage. So, you know, it's our ultimate responsibility, but not necessarily our responsibility to do all the work itself.
Right.
But we, but the, the reality is that, um, we need to find some folks who are, uh, able. To continue to do the work that we've been doing, uh, over decades, some of us. And my, from my case, the spirit is willing, but the flesh is weak, so, um, you know, I, I can't offer a lot of assistance with. Trail maintenance at this point, you know, minor things.
Now, the Park and Rec, um, office, they have. Uh, well, maybe somebody knows more about this, but it seems that the park that's over off of thirty-two, they have an actual group that. Um, meets and talks about that regularly, or Park and Rec has some kind of a, a commission. I, I'm not quite sure how that all gets done, but I know that they do some of the work there. Yeah. Does anybody know more about that?
We've talked about from time to time, but it's, it's difficult to organize and, um, you know, and, and. Getting, it's a, it's a difficult environment to recruit volunteers right now because so many people, there's so, so many double, double income families. And, um, you know, time is limited, people's time is limited, and, and that's, you know, across the board in all organizations that rely on volunteers. It's not unique to our, to us in any way. It's just a major issue.
Now, we've got a list of the, that was compiled over many years of, uh, friends of Fenton Ruby Park and, uh, even up to the last, uh, work. Uh, day that we had, whenever it was, a year or so ago, or, or more, you know, I sent out, you know, uh. You know, you're building all up, this is what we're doing, this is what needs doing, da, 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 and sent that out to, you know, all sixty names on the list.
Yeah, that, but some of that needs updating.
Not yet, but one or two.
Yeah, well, one of the things is, among other things, Brittany Castle's still living in town, but she's married and has a baby and it's, uh. Living at an entirely different address, so the, the list needs to be got over and, and we need, one of the things that could be done is. Take that list and contact folks who are on it and say, look.
Anybody, you know, I, only one or two emails that bounced back to me and, uh. You know, so I assumed they, the message got to everybody and they could easily have, have sent back and said, please take me off the list, but, no, I didn't hear.
How was that list generated? That sixty people?
People showing up at, uh.
The work days?
From, from work days and, uh, you know, it, it goes way back to when we had, um.
The booth at Wellington Day?
We had the booth at Wellington Days, exactly, and we'd sign people up then and, uh, we put names on the list there and, uh. And, and added them as, as we went along at, at various events and, you know, left us sign and cheat and. Or also at, uh, all the, the educational events that we used to do too with, uh, uh. With Barbara.
Clark.
And Barbara Clark.
Barbara Clark, yeah.
Tours and we had, uh, had the, uh, the, uh. The Wild Wings Place come and we had people do, did a geology walk there a couple of years ago, uh.
An archaeology walk.
Yeah.
Archaeology.
Does, does anybody have a sense of how many repeat walkers there are? I mean, I'm. Easily there three or four times a week. And there are some predictable people I see, but not as many as I would think. Does anybody know how many people?
No way to tell because they don't sign every, every time, like, like you don't, uh, of course, and people that are there multiple times a week or.
Just curious.
Once a month.
One thing that would help probably would be to have a presence at Wellington Days, we, you know, at, when we used to do the flea market, a booth at the flea market too. Um, and, and we, we sort of got away from doing that, uh, and that's probably just burnout on the parts of those of us who were, you know. Were, have been on so long, so, you know, that's, I think that's a good way to reach people, uh, is at those events, um.
But there haven't been people, we haven't been around at that time is the thing, not, we didn't feel like doing it, I think.
Well, that, that's, that, that partly that and, you know, but partly is, is it's been quite a few years since we've had active presence at. At Wellington Days and at the flea market and, and think places like that where. The, which gives you an opportunity to interact with people and talk about the parks and the, and the, uh, and. But Norton and Talmage are not as well-known and, um, you know, just to, to really sort of spread the word. Uh, in those forums would be, be, be good, a good thing if anybody is interested in, in pursuing that a bit.
So I'm not sure where we go at this point, where we, uh, we still need to knock this around a little bit more, or.
No, but I think we need to use brainstorming and.
Go to the last meeting and say, help.
I, I personally think we should take this to the, um, first selectment to begin with and see if we can start to stimulate some ideas with how. Uh, we need more help, um, physically and financially to continue to take care of the open space in town and it's. And it's not our responsibility to figure out exactly how to do that. Um, I think we've talked about this um quite often.
Who's frozen?
That's these frozen in time.
Oh, there you are.
Yeah. Sorry. Um, no, I just think, I think we need to take this up to, you know, getting an appointment with Erica and. Starting some discussion and public works. I mean, she can decide to to bring them in, uh, Parks and Rec. Um, but it it's something that's gonna have to be worked on because we're losing you, Peter. There's one thing right there. You're gonna be leaving. Next spring uh from the area, you've been like the major workhorse on taking care of a lot of the properties. And um, a lot of us are just getting to the point where we're, I'm not gonna be around through the summer. Um, so there's gonna be a lot of. Times where we're gonna need somebody else at the town level who has a paid position to be able to take care of things.
Here, here. I agree with you completely.
All right, we can start there. And set up a uh, first select woman and and see where we go from there then.
So, okay. Before, before you move on from Fenton Ruby Park, has everybody noticed that the small field across the street? Or on, on the side where Fenton River is, uh, was it mowed this year?
Yes.
Didn't notice.
The uh, I I I think one of the situations is insofar as getting equipment into those back two fields. Uh, we seriously need to think about uh, I don't know, if if Spencer is still picking stones off his field. Pay him to bring a load of stones up there. We can throw them in so we can get some uh firm base in there. I know we kicked that around. Till it, till it bled a couple of years ago with that uh, uh drainage there. But uh, if we're cautious about filling that, throwing stones in to give us a good solid base, that drainage is just gonna flow over top of the stones. But we need to do something because that thing keeps getting deeper and deeper into the mud and I really don't blame them for not wanting to take their equipment across it.
Do you know specifically that was the reason, Bob? The people that had the um, the contract for the hay?
Well, you would think that that could be a reason for the back two, but the one right off the road, it just didn't get mowed.
Okay, so we don't know exactly why they didn't do it.
Well, I was there last year after they went through and they must have been up to the axles and with the tractor. It was that bad.
That's getting to the other fields though, not just the the field by the road, right? Um.
Pardon me?
They they were getting stuck getting into the second fields there.
The last two fields there, right?
Well, the other option too would be, again, um, I, we've. Technically, we're not supposed to fill areas that are wet. So the other option is to look into having public works put a cover there.
Exactly. That's what there's a, this is the town's park. They need to start realizing. It's time for them to do the maintenance that we have been doing and it's time for a change. They need to take care of the park.
The the is- the issue of putting a culvert, the issue of putting a culvert in is that whole area is so flat. And you're gonna start having to build up. A a a road base across that whole area. In order to get any kind of a culvert in there. And I know we kicked this around before. And you took and checked out with a number of people, Kathy, and the permits that would have been required and everything else. I understand where you're coming from. I'm just talking the old farmer approach. That doesn't block anything, but it gives you a good solid base so the equipment can get over that drainage.
All right, well, again, that's, that's something we could leave to um. Leave to, you know, the town to do. But they would say, well, why, why does anyone need to get over there? Well, it might be up to us to make the case that those fields should remain open. Uh, habitat.
And people are paying. People are paying, there's a contract there and people have paid money to be able to hay those fields and they need to be able to access them.
But that was, that has not happened, it did not happen last year.
Well, whether they didn't get, you know, the other field done, you know, that's another issue, you know, whether that's, that's uh. Whether uh, we, they may say, for example, while we've got the contract, but that doesn't say we gotta hay it. Well, unless conditions were put on it to say, well, uh, yeah, if you take this contract, you do have to hay it. Because we want it to remain as a hay field and not become overgrown with uh. Other species of of growth, so. Gender again, put the, I mean, that's an example of the maintenance that needs to be done so that we could put that on our our list of topics that we need someone else to. To handle. Uh, that 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 doesn't sound like something that that we need to get out and 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 try to, I'll build a road in there. Should, we should leave that. So we'll add that to the list of things that that we uh, that we need to have someone else assume responsibility for.
But that this summer was certainly not a summer, a good summer, uh, given the amount of rain that we had. Um, it's not a great summer for for praying anyway.
Okay. Um, all right, so uh, we'll set up a meeting there at some point and uh. Someone, maybe Kathy and I can go talk to Erica or anyone else that wants to join in also. Um, town development, uh, anything else jumping in any of the other commissions anybody know about at this point? Marilyn, you're sinking slowly and slowly out of sight there, you know, you're. Only see the top of your head there. You know, if you're still, still awake or eating your supper, maybe just.
No, I'm still here.
Okay, good.
So, so on uh thirty two Hancock Road that uh, uh lots been approved. And when it gets sold, the open space fee will be uh three thousand nine hundred dollars into the open space fund.
Wow. That Pete, where where's that, Bob?
Uh, thirty two Hancock Road that lots being uh divided.
Dump road.
Oh, okay. So, and so thirty nine hundred?
Thirty nine hundred.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's, that's in lieu of uh open space?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Good.
And Bob, that'll be when it's actually developed?
When it's sold.
When it's sold, they have to pay, not when it's.
That's what I believe. Well, it says, actually, it says that that's gonna be paid prior to the sale, so it may show up at any time.
Oh, okay. Fine, I'll check with.
Good. Anything else?
Uh, not that I can talk about.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Bob.
Yep.
Um, collaborative organizations, uh, I haven't heard from anybody, uh, listed there or any of the others. Membership, um, so we've got a bunch of things to talk about here. Um. Julia has has uh, has indicated that that uh due to health concerns, um. She uh, she thinks it best at this time that she stepped down from the commission. So, um, that would, that would leave, uh, I can, I'll, I'll talk to her about that, that for sure. Um, but that would leave an opening in uh as uh, as a regular member. Possibly fairly soon. Um. And uh. I asked Mark Drabney if he was interested in continuing. As I, I sent him an email of uh whether he was interested in continuing as an alt that uh. Uh, I haven't heard back from him uh at this point.
They re-upped him at the last uh selectman's meeting.
And did they, they vote on the people as as listed in the agenda? They approved all of those, Bob?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and nor- normally, um. Someone from the selectman's office comes to me and uh it's been Robin and and said, you know, X, Y and Z uh uh. Terms are are expiring. Uh, would they uh, are they going to be reappointed? And I would uh check with uh, with the folks and 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 then make the recommendation, but uh. Uh, that did not happen this time. They were just put on the agenda and apparently voted in, so um. That's, that's the way that stands at this point, so. Doesn't mean that they can't resign at this point, but that uh it didn't follow the normal procedures uh for for doing that. All right, we're gonna need some officers for uh twenty twenty two. Uh. I am uh stepping down as as chair. Um, Kathy, I think has indicated a willingness to uh. To step up and uh. And and wear the golden crown of chairmanship of the commission.
Or draw the short straw. How are you here to look at it?
You got a crown? I thought you had a sheriff's badge.
Well, I got that too. I think the crown's in the bottom of the closet in the back room somewhere.
I'll have to wear it to the next meeting, Pete, while you still can.
Don't think I can hold my head up with it anymore. Um, okay, um, Carol, I think uh has has agreed to uh sign on as Chief Bean Counter Forest. Um, and we are in need of a VP uh and a recording secretary. Uh, if anyone has an interest in doing either of those jobs, we would like to know. I can take minutes for, you know, a few months. Uh, but wouldn't be a permanent job. So, we're, we're, we're standing short of officers at at this point. If anyone wants to give that some thought and speak up, um. Let us know, please.
Peter, do you wanna just explain what um the job of the VP and and the secretary would be for our new members? Just let them know. Your responsibilities would be?
Well, um, you know, I, did I put some kind of little blurb in the minute, so when I, I mean, in the uh. In the agenda email. Um, uh, well, Vice President, stand in for the President. Uh, other than that, um, there isn't necessarily anything specifically assigned. Uh.
Potentially could have to run a meeting if the chair's not present.
Yeah, that 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 sort of thing, so should be prepared to do, to do that. Um, Secretary, um. Gotta, you know, try to, try to take some minutes. Now, our, our minutes don't have to be anywhere near as. As complicated and detailed as as regulatory commissions who can be held accountable. We just need a rough summary really of of. Of the goings on. Um, and I think as I said, uh, you know, this. We can go plenty slow in terms of taking minutes, uh, you know, pretty much follow a format of previous minutes. Uh, you know, you just go down the agenda, bing, 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 and and put in anything, uh, you know. Uh, a quick summary of whatever transpired. The only detail that's needed is if a uh, if a motion uh were passed. And uh, in terms of trying to keep up with the meeting, uh, you know, we can go slow. That's this. We, you don't have to take down every word like they do as they said at other meetings, you know, a summary and motions. We can repeat it, you know, as many times as as one needs and ideally we'll put it in print and. Ahead of time if if possible and and stick them in the, stick them in the, in the, in the minutes. So, if uh someone could, in the next few months or so, think about stepping up to. That position, uh, that would be great.
And they do need to be re- be recorded with the town clerk within three. Business days after the meeting.
Yeah.
If there are motions made.
If there are motions made.
Yep.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's seven days.
I think I got a printout on that. I think it even said forty eight hours now. Kathy, did you get that?
I did, yeah.
Notice them from uh, from Robin, yeah.
Right. But the minutes can be, can be emailed to the.
Yes, yes.
They used to have to be delivered, uh, you know, a hard copy, which was not so, but uh, it's only, you know, email at this point.
And if somebody is interested in trying it out for one of the meetings, you know, just to try it and um. You know, it's just something to consider because I really, you know, if if I am, well, we'll discuss this once we vote, but. Um, moving forward, i- it would be so helpful to have somebody taking minutes besides the chairperson. That would be a little challenging, so.
Okay, um, so, um. Guess we could, uh, well, they wanna know as soon as possible offices and memberships for the, for the commissions. I mean, we could wait and vote next, next time, uh, would certainly be fine. Uh, but we could approve, uh. I think we could probably approve the uh, the uh chair and the uh. The treasure. If anyone wants to put a motion on the floor or. To nominate Kathy Demers as Chair and uh Carol Jordan as Treasurer.
So moved.
Second? Nobody's second. I'll second. All those in favor of uh the motion signify by saying yes or raise a hand. Yes.
Hi.
Abstain? Okay. Scheduled for twenty twenty two, we've been meeting on the third Wednesday of the month. Do we still wanna hold to that?
Um. This was, was more of an issue this past year, but um, I wonder if there would be any. If if it's possible to change to a different Wednesday because we've been, we ran into so many problems. Uh, because we had issues for uh matters for the Board of Finance, whether this will happen in the future, probably not as much as it did this past year. But had meeting, the night before the Board of Finance meeting. Created some, a lot of issues when we, when we had, had things we wanted to bring before the Board of Finance and uh. We're not able to get any, to uh inform them uh far enough in advance. I don't know what the cat, what's, what other things are on the calendar, but whether it would make sense to try and go to the the first or the fourth or something so that. Because they're, they meet on the third Thursday and when we were meeting on the third Wednesday and had. Things that that needed to to be taken to Board of Finance and I just raised that as a thought.
Yeah, I would, that's probably not as big a deal because we're not gonna have that much. Kathy?
Well, the other thing too, um, Carol, you bring up a really good point. Um, the Board of Selectment meet on the first and the third Mondays. And often our meeting is after um, the Board of, Board of Selectmen's meeting. So again, if there's an issue. That's come up that we need to have the Board of Selectmen address. It's a lot harder. You gotta wait for a few weeks before they have the first of the month again. So, uh, I, I think Carol's got a good idea to think about how we would, we might be looking into um. You know, I would suggest maybe even the second Wednesday of the month. I don't know how that works for the people's schedule or for the town's schedule, but.
I think you might wanna also realize that H is gonna be a meeting format. If it was remote, it. We don't have to concern ourselves with whether there's room downstairs in in the meeting hall versus if it's in person. I'm just saying, we might wanna wrap that in with uh agenda and item H. If we decide to stay Zoom, it doesn't, there's no, it's not a problem, but if we're gonna go to in person. And that room is already taken up by another monthly meeting, we'd have to consider that as well, right?
Well, I can look into uh whether, what days are available. Yeah, I mean, yeah, it might matter as. The next item on the agenda might make this uh. Move, but uh, if we. Well, at some point, we'll probably be meeting in person anyway. well, at some point, we'll probably be meeting in person anyway. I would, I would think.
Do Wednesdays work for everybody? They, they seem to have.
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah.
Yeah. Nora, Pat, you guys good, good with Wednesdays in general?
Wednesdays work for me.
Okay, thanks. Nora, is Nora frozen? Frozen up. Can't hear you, Nora. Okay. All right, so Wednesdays though, it's besides second Wednesdays, is there anyone who are interested in making other Wednesdays, or I could check and see whether, what other Wednesdays are available anyway and just.
Yeah, it might be good to check and see what other meetings there are on Wednesdays and, and whether there's gonna be a problem because they only have two, what, as, if we're doing remote stuff and people are, or hybrid, there will be difficulties having more than two meetings on the same night because of limited.
All right, well, let's go to meeting format and, and in case this point. Where are we? Anyone opinions on whether we stay remote for a while or switch to in-person? There's reasons to do both. If we, if we're meeting in person, it's nice to gather and sit around the table also, and then we can refer to, go to the files at any time to get documents and look at maps and things that we do frequently. Because they're right there, accessible to us, whi- which is a good thing to be able to do. And remote, obviously, you don't have to leave your house on a, on a winter night to go out to a meeting. Just get a couple of candy tidbits and around the table.
I guess another option, another option would be hybrid.
I forget what the details are on hybrid.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure.
If you meet.
I had that document somewhere.
If, if, well, I've got it. If you meet remotely, I guess you gotta, if, if you meet in person, you only need to, to provide, you know, the, the electronic hookups if there's someone on the commission itself that does not want to attend the meeting. You don't have to worry about the public. If we're meeting remotely, then someone that wants to attend and, and can ask to have a, a setup to, to attend the meeting.
I mean, personally, I don't mind having an in-person meeting. We're doing that with the Historical Society now.
Okay.
Are you masked, Bob?
Oh, that's your op- option. Last night, we weren't.
But do you know?
I would, I would need to, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to break in, Carol.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, go ahead, Carol.
I, I am on the fence because I am going to be babysitting my granddaughter two days a week, Tuesdays and Wednesdays. And if, and I, I don't feel comfortable asking the commission if there's anybody vaccinated or unvaccinated because that's a personal, that's a personal thing, and I don't think that needs to be brought up. I would probably either come to the meetings with a mask on or come in Zoom because obviously the baby isn't vaccinated.
That's understandable.
It would, it would be a little challenging if we had to do a hybrid. I, I'm just saying in general, not.
Yes.
Marilyn, I definitely totally understand because you'd have to be running the meeting instead of like the Board of Selectmen does. You'd have to have the electronics, you'd have to be in the room with the electronics and the board. I think personally, you know, I'm not sure that I would really want to be handling that as the chairperson having.
Oh, I understand. I understand. But I'm kind of, I'm kind of in an awkward position.
Yep, yep, then I have same issues as Marilyn in the, my grandson has had his first shot. My granddaughter is too young for, for a shot, and, and neither of them is fully vaccinated at this point. And so I have same concerns, although we, we don't see them on a regular basis. We're being very careful when we do get together.
I think we've been pretty successful remote. I mean, in all reality.
Well, I think so too. If, you know, that, we want to try to please everybody and, and it's certainly not unreasonable to continue, I think, in, in remote mode at least for a while.
Yep.
And.
Well, maybe through the winter, you know, till maybe we can get it, maybe we'll finally get a handle on this whole thing. I don't know.
And then we can, then, then we can meet outside.
Set up a tent in the parking lot.
Well, hey, Peter.
Conservation in the park.
I, I hope you won't be masked this Sunday because I won't recognize you.
Yeah, I know. Okay. All right, well, it sounds like there's a reasonable feeling to, to go with remote, at least at this point.
Yes.
Shall we continue in that mode? Is that agreeable to everybody?
I'll make a motion that we continue with re- remote, at least through the winter months.
I second that.
Okay. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, tensions. Okay. We'll continue to see you on the little screen. Okay, other, the, the Daily Award website on the, on the commission page needed tuning up. There were errors and omissions and, and misspellings and on that. So, and a name, a couple of names were missing at that point. There were, there were several errors and, including the initial click on was listed as the Richard K. Daily Award. So, and that had been sitting there for years like that too. Anyway, that, that got straightened out. There's the Cattle Rock property, the Brownfield site out there has, has, I guess, been transferred to the town. And I don't know if we have a lot to do with that at this point. The, the Netmuck Trail goes through that. And I think they, they've been communicating with us for a couple of years about, you know, you know, what's gonna happen to this, when is it, you know, if the town gets it, da-da-da-da, because they want to, I think, put an easement on that for the trail through that, through that property, which is, you know, no problem for us to, to deal with. I, I don't remember how much the property, property, it was only a couple acres that Wellington gets, right?
Right.
Like Ashford has the, has the bulk of the property.
And, and I don't think that falls within our purview anyway. Because it's, we, we have no authority over that property.
Right, so.
Or an issue for the selectmen.
They could bring it to the town or we could, you know, support it, I suppose, but, but I don't think it's anything we need to, to get into. Any other old business that anyone's come up with?
Bob? Ju- ju- just more on the Cattle Rock. The selectmen went into executive session over the Cattle Rock this, their meeting this week. There's some kind of, of something about, some kind of litigation. So, with executive session, you don't know what was going on, but it, that was, that was their, you know, that's what happened there with the selectmen this week.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So I, I, yeah, I guess the, the original owners were, were suing or taking it to court, trying to, you know, to, to get it back. But, you know, the reality is they've had years to pay the taxes and didn't do anything, so they're probably not gonna get anywhere with it. Okay, new business, communications. I don't have any communications. Any other new businesses? Anyone else have new business they'd like to bring before this august body?
I have a question.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I just, my question is, since we're working on purchase of a property, are we going to think about approaching the CIP for additional funding for open space this go-around?
I think, I think we're gonna maybe stand down on that at this point until this, the expenditures and purchase procedures are, 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 are fully carried out, I think, for.
Okay.
Much property.
I think we'd be in a better position, Bob, if we, if we know whether we've received a grant and, and given the way things have been happening with the timelines and, and deep. It's, you know, we, it may be a long time before we find out whether we've gotten a grant. So I think it's best to table that until.
All right. I just thought I'd mention, I just thought I'd mention that considering, you know, it's budget season coming up pretty quick.
Right, and it, and I, it gets to ruin, ruin Christmas, the Christmas season. Get your CIP request.
Yeah, no, that, that's a good question, Bob. Thanks for bringing that up, you know, because, yeah, that, that is, is on the horizon now.
Right, yeah.
That's what we're gonna let it stand by now. The bud- budget will be coming, I think, somewhat after, and I think we'll be able you know, work something out that. Kathy, back, you had something you want?
No, just a. A couple of things. Carol, you had actually made note when we were doing the application for the grant that the Open Space Fund has been credited with some money because of four, four ninety penalties. Yeah, do you know, do you have that figure, Carol?
Hang on a sec, yeah. I don't have those figures, but I, I can see if I can, if I might not be able to lay my hands on.
Okay, all right. And then the other thing is just our budget request for our, you know, for the commission, if we should start thinking about that. Because Carol did remind me that we'll probably have to put something in in January for our budget request. And then they'll start to do the hearings in February. So, we might want to consider if we want to ask for more money to help with maintenance. If we're gonna continue to have to do some of the maintenance or, you know, we know there might be some upcoming things like new signs for the town image and so on, so.
Hmm, okay.
Yep, I, I, I personally think we should put in for, for an increase to two thousand. In our, we should start with a request for two, for an increase from fifteen hundred to two thousand. And, you know, whether we get anywhere with it or not, but it gives us an opportunity to talk about needs and the fact that we have not gotten an increase in budget amount in many, many years. I will do some research on how many years it's been that we've had funding at that level or lower. And what bargain we've been for the town.
Yeah.
But we also have to spend the money because there have been some years where we haven't spent it all.
Yeah, but there, you know, but, yeah, hang on a sec, let me see if I got.
Pete, has, has the price of lumber come back to reality or is it still up there in the stratosphere?
Yeah, I have no idea. I haven't bought any recently.
Because that would, that's a rationale for asking for.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Good point, Marilyn.
Yeah.
Yeah, lumber has come down a little bit. I bought some finished lumber for the windows at the tavern the other day, and it, it seemed a lot more reasonable.
Yeah.
Well, put your thinking caps on though, going forward. So, what we want to be submitting in January, if there's some other items though, or some other things you, you all can think of that we want to be putting into this request, because we have to be fairly, you know, not exactly specific with what we're gonna do with the money, but categorically, we have to know, so.
Especially since Pete probably owned like the routing equipment that we use for the signs. And some of the things that Pete has done all these years is probably from his own basement usage of his machinery, his tools that, that may not be something that other members who would help with that kind of work own and want to share. That's a big, that's a big piece of it too.
It is.
Bob, I'm gonna pass that router template set that, that you, you gave me, your Vermont American router sign-making set. I'm gonna pass that on to Christopher. He's gonna see. It's his, 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 his router.
I'll be looking for, I'll be looking for letters routed into the trees on Marsh Road.
And, oh, and Peter, I, I think I need to paint, paint the, the letters on some of the signs that you replaced, the ones that got stolen and then were replaced, so.
Yeah, there, there's a couple of need replacement. I don't think the, the Ruby Trail sign maybe still needs a replacement out there too.
Right.
Yeah, that whole post is gone, I think.
Yeah, it was. They stole everything.
Yeah, including the, the stainless map. Was there one on that post?
Yeah, there was.
Wow.
Right. I wonder if Mark could make another one for us. That's another question.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, okay. Well, we'll check that out. Okay, so, any other new business? Okay, next meeting is, is Sunday at nine-thirty on Mason Road.
I will not.
And the one after that is December fifteenth, I guess. And so, thank you, everybody, for tuning in and, and, and making us a part of your evening, as they say.
All right, have a nice Thanksgiving, everybody.
Okay, you too.
We'll see you Sunday.
Okay.
Nice.
Yeah.